Everyone and welcome to the November ninth, two thousand and twenty. City of Toowalton work session. Tonight, we're honored to have Metro Council Craig Dirksen. Uh, this is gonna be his swan song with us for now. I know he'll stay involved as mayor, former mayor Cook has done. But he offered to come and visit us at the end of the year here because this is his end of his term. And we have a new Metro Council will be representing us. Garrett Rosenthal will start next year. Uh, so with that, welcome Council Dirksen and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. It's great to be here again and see you, at least on the small screen. And I'm appreciative as challenged as I am by technology. I'm appreciative of the opportunity we have to still continue to do our jobs. And that's kind of where I want to talk about, talking about the end of two thousand and twenty update. It's certainly been a year of unpredictability, to say the least. We've faced so many obstacles from a global pandemic to wildfires to political uncertainty and civil unrest. And we've all been challenged in our role, both as public servants and as individuals. But for the most part, we've adapted, risen to the challenge to still do our jobs in the face of limits and restrictions. And I'm so grateful to everyone who has stepped up during these trying times, including every jurisdiction in Washington County. And I'm so proud of Toowalton, the city of Toowalton, as you have continued to safely provide services to your residents. And it's gone the extra mile by creating some innovative new programs like prescription drug pickup program and the gift cards for good program. And across the region, local businesses ran PPE and food drives for first responders. Communities opened up sanctuary to those displaced by wildfires. And we've stood in solidarity with our BIPOC communities. The Metro's mission stands strong. And we continue to plan for the future of our growing region, working with our city and our county and community partners to invest in ways to alleviate the strain on our housing, on transportation, land use needs, while seeking regional solutions to supporting housing services. Five times over the last two decades, voters have continued to support investments to protect water, natural areas, wildlife habitat, and expanding access to nature. Our staff continues to refine the four hundred and seventy-five million dollar Parks and Nature Bond renewal that was passed by voters in two thousand and nineteen, which is centered on racial equity, community engagement, and climate resilience. And we're currently recruiting for community members to be on the new bond oversight committee. Please help us to spread the word to your community members. The application deadline is coming up November sixteenth, so there's still time. Those interested can visit our website, Metro's website for more details. But in the short term, Metro Council is working to target bond investments that benefit the communities that are most impacted by the pandemic while expediting the capital grants program and the participatory grant making pilot program. For the local share program, staff is currently working on a handbook for our twenty-seven local park providers, including the city of Toowalton, to help guide the work of identifying priority parks and natural projects in their communities. We'll be reviewing the draft handbook with our partners pretty soon so that park providers can begin identifying and submitting priority projects for those local share dollars. The region has been facing an affordable housing crisis for years. But two thousand and twenty has highlighted the importance of our investments in housing. A heartfelt thank you to the voters of this region who passed the two thousand and eighteen Affordable Housing Bond and the two thousand and twenty Supportive Housing Services measures. In total, there are seventeen affordable housing projects currently underway in the region with funds committed from the two thousand and eighteen Affordable Housing Bond. In fact, our partners are moving so fast with these projects that the figures in your packet may already be outdated, but they are up to date on my slides today. And as I prepare to retire from elected office, it's a great pleasure to be able to say that District Three currently leads the region in the most projects under the two thousand and eighteen Affordable Housing Bond. Seven total projects in various stages of development. A major thanks to the community partners and government agencies that have made this possible. Let's also celebrate the living wage jobs that will come with the construction of these affordable buildings. Many of the projects in Washington County also exceed county goals for women and minority owned business contracting. Together, these projects will create eighteen hundred and ninety-seven new affordable homes, which is about half the total unit production goal for the program. We're actually ahead of the curve to achieve the goal. Some projects near Toowalton include, of course, the Basalt Creek project in Toowalton in partnership with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, which will provide one hundred and sixteen units of housing, and the Viewfinder in the Tiger Triangle, eighty-one units, which will include much needed larger units for families and also will set aside units particularly for veterans. Work is also underway to implement the Supportive Housing Services measure that regional voters approved in May of this year. And the Metro Council will soon be approving the oversight committee members. Program implementation is on track and expected to begin in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, bringing critical resources to Washington County to address the urgent needs of those experiencing homelessness or a threat of homelessness. Washington County staff is working to engage the community to develop their local implementation plan. Supporting housing services includes three key elements: long-term rent assistance, wraparound services, and actual housing units. We need five thousand units to support the people of this region. A few weeks ago, Metro led a workshop with agency and community partners to focus on strategies for generating these units. We look forward to continuing to work with partners on this goal and to earning the support of even private landlords and affordable housing developers to help us get there. Let's talk about regional waste. Metro continues to make progress on the regional waste plan as a blueprint for achieving the community vision that addresses the challenges with our garbage and recycling system. This includes continuing to advocate at the state for more producer responsibility, including household hazardous waste, plastics packaging, and paper and mattresses. Metro is also continuing our engagement work on a possible new state-of-the-art center for collecting waste and recycling here on the West Side in Cornelius. A survey is currently available for residents to weigh in on that data. Well, I'm completely and incredibly disappointed that the Get Moving two thousand and twenty measure did not pass this year. But I want to thank our region's voters for at least considering the measure. Metro is still committed to our vision of improving the region's transportation system to benefit everyone, including communities of color, low-income residents, and businesses. While the outcome of this election gives us the opportunity to tailor our approach to better meet community needs, we continue to need a safe and reliable transportation system. And I look forward to seeing the community continue to come together on this issue. So we've accomplished so much in two thousand and twenty in spite of all the challenges and restrictions. And thanks to the tremendous work of Metro staff and our community and jurisdictional partners, including the city of Toowalton. But I am encouraged by the progress we've made in advancing our regional goals. And I look forward to the possibility in years to come, and I'll be watching. It's been a pleasure working with you all and serving District Three for these past eight years. Thank you. Now, how do I get out of that? Escape and stop share. Look at that. It's like I know what I'm doing. So with regard to the solid waste rate increase, I think maybe the best way for me to respond to that is to respond to what questions or concerns you might have. I don't really have any kind of a presentation prepared, but I'm happy to talk to you about it and answer questions you might have.
Okay, the. I'm gonna try to put this in the. Uh, how do I put this the nicest way? Well, a lot of the cities were taken aback by the news of the proposed rate increase of nine dollars a ton for the tipping fee that many folks, at least in Washington County, were not aware of it, that aware of this proposed increase. They only found out through Pamplum Media with an article. So if you can go into the details, one, why Metro needs this nine-dollar increase.
Sure.
And then also get into. The lag, I'm not that I want to put this in your, pin this on you, Kelsey Dirksen, but there seems to be like a lack, a lack of transparency or communication about the proposed rate increase because this is gonna be a mid-budget cycle increase.
Yeah.
And Metro has already said there'll be another increase in July.
It probably will, probably will.
So it's people who have to tell us the residents this is us versus Metro.
Yeah.
Uh, the city council is gonna be the one to have to approve a rate increase for Republic. And so if you could go into the background of why this is needed.
Sure.
And part of the, uh, what, what reasons, or you can't talk tonight. Uh, why is, why is it needed and the lack of communication, what, those are my terms, if you will, please.
Well, I think the typically we review solid waste rates every year in the spring. And then make adjustments to the rates as needed through a process. And then it takes, they take, uh, and then they take, uh, they begin on in July, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, this year, because of COVID, because of the pandemic, we made the decision as a council to forego that, to even have the discussion about rates and wait and see where things were going because things were, you know, what things were like in the spring. It was so up in the air. How long is this going to last? So if we can hold off on that, we try to do that. But after, after having gone through and completed our budget process and gone into the new fiscal year, we've been informed by our staff, our budget staff, our financial staff, and from the solid waste staff that we can't continue without an increase and an increase very soon. We've already cut our solid waste budget by eleven million dollars. And we're probably gonna do another four million, even with the rate increase. We're operating in the hole and can't continue to do so. And I would say that even with this rate increase, it means reducing our level of service. And also, we're spending down a dangerous percentage of, of our, the, our, our resources. We usually keep a fund balance and we're being forced to, to spend that down considerably, even if we do do a, a, a waste increase. So this is, this increase is sort of in lieu of having already done a rate increase in July, which we did not do. And this rate, rate increase, if we do pass it, it would actually go through the process and it wouldn't take effect until probably, well, no, I was told tonight, it would take for, take effect on January fourth. So it wouldn't, it would not yet take effect. And there will be a process, a public process while when, because Metro, we've not even, the Metro Council has not had a discussion of this rate increase yet. We still need to have that process, which would be a public process. And so what the, you were correct in the amount of the fee close, uh, that what's being recommended to us. And that's just what's being recommended, it's nine dollars and twenty-nine cents a ton. The increase, which would mean the tonnage rate would go from ninety-eight dollars a ton to a hundred and seven dollars a ton. Of that, two dollars and sixty-eight cents would go to the regional system fee. That's the part of the fee that pays for things like recycling, hazardous waste disposal, paint recycling, illegal dump site cleanup, the rid patrol that we have, those kinds of things. And then the, the remainder, the six dollars and sixty-four cents, that's the solid waste fee. Those are the actual operating revenues for us to operate our transfer stations. Um, we've seen during the pandemic, on top of everything else, there's been a big drop in tonnage. So we have less revenue coming in, but the, the, the cost to operate those facilities remain fixed. In fact, are continuing to increase over time as things do. Uh, and so we're finding ourselves dangerously in the hole and cannot continue uh, with the, the rate at the current level. And so that's, that's why we're looking at it. Uh, our estimate analysis is that the actual impact for the average household would be a sixty cent, sixty cents increase in their, uh, in their garbage rate if the, the new local jurisdictions and the local, uh, local haulers make the decision to pass this through. And of course, they evaluate their fees and rates every year as well to consider, to, to maintain the correct, uh, to, to, that they get the, the correct amount of, of refund or fund from their, from their work. So that's kind of where we are there. This doesn't increase Metro's excise tax. It only increases the amount of money that goes directly toward providing the services and operating our transfer stations.
What about communications? Because that seems quite a few of us were shocked by this, that this seemed to come out of left field.
Well, again, this, this is just us saying that we've reviewed and it looks like we need to make this change. So we still need to go through the official, we've not gone through any kind of official process to read as a council to review this and approve it. None of that has been done yet.
Right.
So that public process is yet to happen.
Right. Um, you, I can guarantee you're gonna hear from other Washington County mayors as well as probably MMC and probably from Clackamas County and haulers about how they feel about it.
Well, I mean, from, from other, from haulers and, and, and other people in the industry that we're working with. We've been having an ongoing dialogue with them all along.
Okay. All right. I don't want to hog the floor here. So sure, others with questions about the tipping fee or anything else, Council Dirksen covered tonight. Council Reyes.
Thank you, um, for the presentation. It was very informative. So, um, once you say you're operating in a hole right now. And, um, so when you're out of that hole, would that go away as well? Or will you continue charging us, um, after that?
It's my understanding that this is the minimum fee that's necessary for us to maintain the water. So we're not gonna, we won't get out of the hole per se. We'll just be able to continue functioning. There won't be an opportunity with, from this, we'll, as I said, even with this rate increase, we'll be spending down reserves and we'll be making further cuts to service. So our first goal would be if, if things, when things begin to turn around, would be to restore those reserves and restore service. So those two things we would, we would prioritize before we would consider a reduction in the fee.
So isn't the proposal, just to make sure people heard it, proposal was, uh, if this is decided upon Metro Council December third, to move ahead on a nine-dollar increase now. Uh, and then more than likely in July, there would be another increase.
More than likely, we would need to make another increase.
And so the Council Reyes.
Yeah.
You're probably gonna see a rate increase here. If they approve it, you know, as Council Dirksen was saying, in, in January, and then another increase in July.
But to, 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 to answer the, the point that you're making, uh, our rate fees are based on actual costs to provide service. So there have been times in the past where we actually have reduced our fee because our costs have gone down, costs per unit have gone down. So we would certainly, as all we always do, would consider doing that. Uh, we just don't see a point in the, in the foreseeable future where that will happen.
Other questions? Council Brooks, are you, that answer your question, Council Reyes?
So, I mean, it's just, I always feel like, um, that we keep getting like, I understand that we need to raise the rate to operate or maintain operations. I just always, and I, and I appreciate what you said, um, um, Metro Council Darson, that you're considering also, you also consider go down and fees as well. So I, I just feel like sometimes we, we want to bring it down to the community and charge them. And then, um, it just stays that way even after you are already out of that hole or not just us, but I mean, I just want to make sure that it's not always, you know, like it's, there's a consideration of also going down of fees when we're doing good and when we're operating, uh, during better times. That's, that's my, my point here.
Except, except for this year, this unusual year, typically we review our rate every spring. And we either raise it, lower it, or leave it the same based on what our analysis is of the rate.
Right. It's like that with everything. So that's why I brought it up. Um, because, um, it is gonna, it goes down to the community, to people that are pain. And it's just already with the pandemic and the whole issues that they're as well going through. And, you know, this is just another adding fee that they're gonna have to worry about, um, during this time. So that's why I, I appreciate you say that you have considered, uh, cutting non-fee's and things like that when, when during good times. And I, I mean, there's good and bad times and I understand all that. But I just wanted to put it on record that during good times, I think we should consider, hey, you know, we're doing great, maybe we should lower the fee during this time. And I understand it's gonna be a while, but just thought I, I bring it up. So thank you.
In the past, we have reduced the rate.
Thank you.
Council Brooks.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your service as well. And, um, it's been nice getting to know you. And, um, and I, I had a few things come up. I'm gonna go back to the tipping fee at the end, I think. But, um, one of my questions was if someone wanted to volunteer on the Parks Advisory Board.
Yes.
Um, how do the, where do they sign up for that? And what kind of commitment, do you know how often they're meeting and what kind of thing that's gonna be?
Typically, they meet, uh, depending on the, the workload, uh, once a month or once a quarter, depending on early in the bond measure where you're, you're kind of setting things up and evaluating everything. And of course, new people need to learn as well. You could count on every month. But once the bond measure is flowing along and things are happening, it might reduce to only once a quarter. The way to, the way to apply is if you go to the Metro website and, uh, if you click on, uh, there, on the, the link for Parks and Nature, and there will be a place there where you could find where it says, here's a place where you can sign in or sign up.
Okay. And thank you very much. And, um, my other, also, I just want to thank you for, I've been working on the, um, planning for the Metro, uh, housing bond funding. So thank you for your work and explanation on that. Um, and finally, the pictures of the planned, um, developments, the one, which, which corner? Do you remember which corner is the one that's the image of the Toowalton proposal?
You know, I do not know.
Okay.
I know where, I know where the Tigered one is because I drive by it all the time.
Okay, okay.
The Tigered one is, if you know where the Tigered Cinemas are and the, and the parking lot backs onto Seventy Second Avenue. And it's right across the street from that, from the.
No, no.
Cinemas parking lot.
Okay. I, I meant the one, um, the corner on the slide.
Oh, yeah, the Toowalton one, I, I don't know where, exactly where it is at.
Okay. Um, I think, but I think what I'm saying is it was, you go, you showed us a slide of four pictures.
Uh huh.
And do you know the Toowalton one, which picture it is on the slide, like which corner of this?
I have to go back. I'm not sure that the Toowalton was actually in the picture. I only learned, I only learned about the Toowalton one like the day before yesterday.
Oh.
So the, I know that when we put the slide together, uh, the slide package together, the one picture was of the, of the Tigered one. But the other three, I think, are in Beaverton and Fordland.
Okay. That, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then finally, uh, my question about the, the rates. Um, can you tell me more? I, I kind of didn't have a chance to write down the numbers. Or you could have maybe an email with that information, just a basic thumbnail, like what the rate increase is gonna be. And you split it out into the different numbers. Um, and then tell us what the definition, like what is a tipping fee? And then finally, what are the actual factors that raised the costs?
Okay, I, I can, I can, uh, I can send an email with those to your staff to, for distribution to all of you that has those, uh, figures and also just a kind of a, a basic breakdown of what the costs are and what, what leads to those. Happy to do that.
I think that would be so helpful when we're communicating and trying to understand and explain to the constituents that we serve. And again, um, I hope you have a great retirement and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
Uh, I see Valerie's hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for your service too. We, it's really appreciated. And, um, I had two things like really quick, what, uh, Councilor Brooks had asked. Can you, um, uh, simply, fairly simply explain what a tipping fee is?
Sure. We, think, think in terms of, um, the garbage truck that comes to your house and picks up your garbage. When it leaves there, it goes to either one of our transfer stations or to, there are private ones in the region as well. It goes there and that, and that whole backend tips up and all the garbage in it dumps out. And that goes onto a scale and then they have to pay that fee that much money per ton.
Okay.
If there, if the, if the truck, the, the, the load in the truck weighs five tons, then they have to pay that, that ninety-eight dollars or a hundred and seven dollars per ton that comes out of the truck.
Okay, that's kind of easy. It makes sense. Yeah. Um, and then my other question is just, um, once Metro takes a vote on this, at that, um, I'm back on the communication thing, will something be sent to our city or to at least the mayor? So we, we're aware at the time after the vote happens pretty quickly that, that is.
I would assume so, but, but I will, I will check into that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, a public hearing on it and we always do too. We do a first read and a second read. And we never take a vote on it before the second read, if then. So it will be, be before our council at least twice before that vote is taken. And there'll be an opportunity there for anyone to come and make public comment as well. So if you look at the Metro website, where at our agendas coming up, uh, you can see when that is gonna be on the agenda. And, and you can either send, send written comment or join our meeting and, and, and say your piece and also hear everything that we have to say about it and what our staff has to say about it when we deliberate to make that decision.
See Sherwin's hand up.
Thank you. Um, just a real quick clarification. And I believe KJ Lewis is on the line from, um, from Republic. But, um, that, so whatever Metro decides, which I believe you're set to approve it in December. So it goes into effect in January. So it is coming up.
Yes.
Um, that then the weight, the haulers, including Republic, will make the decision about how to pass that on. So, um, we wouldn't implement anything in, at the city of Toowalton level based on what Metro does. We would look to Republic, um, to what they, what they would decide to do.
Thank you for that clarification. I kind of tried to say that earlier on, but not, I didn't say it very well.
Nancy.
Thank you. Whoops. Uh, you mentioned, I'm having like a computer night. I apologize. Um, thank, first of all, thank you for all of your years of volunteerism and your years of service. Um, it's been a remarkable career and I appreciate all that you've, all the years and all the time that you've put in for the community locally and as a Metro counselor, thank you for that. It's been a very good career and thank you. Um, I, I have a question. You mentioned the, sort of the deep hole, if you will, that Metro's in right now because of, um, the situation and the climate that we're in right now. And you said in order to sort of get things floating again, um, that it would be a combination of a rate increase and a service reduction.
Yes.
And I was wondering, you could speak to what the service reduction could look like.
Oh, to be honest, I don't know yet. At our next council meeting, we're gonna be hearing directly from staff and they'll be outlining exactly what the entire impacts will be.
Okay, because I mean, please keep in mind, I mean, I'm sure
Yeah.
everyone is struggling with this, but you know, one of the ways that our residents will have to deal with a rate increase on their end, especially in these really difficult economic times. I mean, people might be looking to reduce their can size, increase recycling.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, if we start you know, scaling back on those services or making them bi-monthly or something like that, it kind of takes away one of the few levers that homeowners and residents here have to try to balance an increase in a, you know, a primary service that you can't, you know, you can't opt out of and you can't do without.
Yeah.
Cause I mean realistically.
In addition to the 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 haulers bringing garbage to our our transfer stations, we also have a pretty steady stream of 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 individuals that come with their truck or their car. And they've got uh construction debris, uh hazardous waste, paint, things like that. Um, in fact, we're seeing an in- increase in that with a a reduction in overall garbage tonnage, we're seeing an increase of 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 people coming to the transfer stations with loads. And I think that has to do with uh with the pandemic, people are at home, they're remodeling their houses, so they're tearing things out. Uh, they're cleaning the garage for the first time in twenty years or getting the junk out of the basement. They didn't know what was there. And so we're seeing a lot of that and that's actually really expensive. Um, the kinds of service cutbacks we're probably gonna be talking about is we would reduce the hours that our transfer stations are open for people like that to be able to come. Or limit the kinds of things that they would be able to bring to us for a while, that kind of stuff. It wouldn't be a reduction in the service of normal garbage collection and and disposal.
Okay, that's good to know because I know we're already on a different
Yeah.
schedule than like the city of Portland is on. I think that we're very fortunate here where we get recycling and yard debris recycling on a weekly basis, which wasn't always the case with like, you know, city of Portland residents. So
In Tigered, we are debris every other week, which is really difficult this time of year.
Yeah, the leaf the leaf issue.
Yes.
But um we're glad to hear we will hopefully have a reduction, at least in service for people. That's good.
I saw Paul had his hand up and then Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Counselor, uh, I just want to echo what Todd even said. You have had a great uh public service career. We we thank you for your service. Um, I I do though want to point out, I would hope that uh first as a Tigered counselor and then as mayor of Tigered, one of your reasons to run from to uh for a seat on Metro was to bring more transparency and make life easier for cities who are frustrated by actions such as this. Um, one of the things I'd I'd like to ask you to ask your staff, um, if if it appears that a lot of this um from what you're referencing, and I don't know all the facts, we haven't heard everything, but it appears that a lot of it is COVID related due to things that happened um over the summer. And if that's the case, I would think that the political climate has now changed dramatically and that our congressional delegation, which tried to get you Metro funding in one of the CARES Acts and was unsuccessful, as I understand it.
That's correct. We got none.
Right. So my understanding, though, is that this congressional, our congressional delegation, uh some of whom have a lot of seniority and um and have an awful lot of weight, DeVazio is one of them. Um, and our district in our area, Congress One Bonamici is is extremely influential in getting things done that need to be done. That I would think that um in this political climate, you may be able to finally get some financial relief. And one of the things I would ask you to do is is to just have Metro hold off until January and see what the what the climate is and see what happens as uh the new Congress takes effect and even in this the session that's gonna take effect beginning next week. Um, and because this this really is kind of I I I understand the delay from last year, but it's still very much unprecedented. It is extremely unfair to um our good friends at Republic. Um, the only and the other thing I would really ask you to do is if you cannot wait, if Metro just says we cannot wait, this has to be in effect by January. Um, I'd like to give you an example of what the city of Tuolatin did. When the Republic came to us, they were losing money on recycling. And they had a nice, they had a solution and the council approved it, but it's 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 separate, it's labeled as temporary. It may not be, we don't know, um as the recycling, as plastic considered continues to lose value. But it was a good partnership with Republic and the city and I think pretty transparent in that what it was for, why it was for and how it would go away. And and I use that as an example because I think the um the the trend, the T twenty twenty bill, um and hopefully that you Metro is gonna have some additional conversations over what went wrong. But from where I sit, what went wrong was um you didn't label it as just for that project. It clearly became the understanding that it was a permanent tax on business instead of just a tax to pay for this project. Um, and it was the the way that Metro was paying for it. So um hopefully, that's something that that staff can kind of figure out and and can direct the Metro counselor and the Metro council can um react appropriately to um something that this this type of rate increase is just unprecedented. Enough of that. Now, what I would do want to talk about is two things. Number one, for um one of the counselors, I forget who now want to know about applying to the uh Metro Park Nature Bond Committee. I posted the link.
Um. Council Brooks.
In Council Brooks, thank you. And uh I posted the link there in the chat for those who who
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, it was, um, you're right, it's right, it's right there on the on the webpage. It's pretty uh easy to find. And um I'm I'm very um happy to see you guys progress with that. Um, and then um I now I I had I had another comment, but in the instance of time and and my old memory is going away, I can't remember what the the third thing was with respect to your presentation. But thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and I do appreciate um trash aside, all that you, especially with respect to the zoo. I know that has been a project of yours for a long time. Um, we love the zoo. We always have. I was really happy to see that Metro figured out a way to get the uh uh lights up going this uh holiday season. And uh and you worked out a solution uh to the to to every for everybody. And so I was really happy to see that because that's and uh and for those of you who haven't ever done it, it's a real uh special evening, um if you can can partake uh partake in that and I'll let
They're gonna do one this year where you can do, you can sign up and you can do a drive through. So you even stay with your family in your car and there's a loop through the zoo that you can drive through.
And we don't freeze today. Well, thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Dirksen, I want to join everyone in thanking you for your many years of public service. Uh, I really enjoyed working with you on the Southwest Corridor Steering Committee.
Yes.
Um, and like you, I was very disappointed uh by the failure of uh the the bond. So I wanted to ask you about that. Um, first, uh just to get your take on on what exactly happened, why it failed, and then second, and perhaps more importantly, uh what discussions are going on at Metro about coming back with the transportation package at some point in the future?
Well, the the answer to the second part, that's a good question. Um, you know, I believe the the public outreach we did to create the this package was unprecedented, both in its scope and how long we took to do it. It was literally years that we put that together. And we met with thousands of people and took their their input into consideration when putting it together. Um, there are those who were unhappy with the package, that they wanted it to be their way. But there was an equal number of people who wanted to be another way. We felt like this was the best balance between a lot of different opinions on how things should be. Um, but it's likely that uh many of the people will see this as an opportunity to go back and rewrite it in an effort to get it to be more what they wanted it to be. Uh, I suspect when that happens, where we eventually will end up is where we are on this package because that's the balance. That's the compromise between differing views on what transportation should be and could be. Um, that being said, that's gonna take even longer. So it's gonna be years before another, I hope I'm wrong, but I believe it will be years before you see another package come forward for for regional transportation funding. Um, I honestly believe that the only reason it failed is because of the pandemic and people's uncertainty on where things are with the economy. Um, and we recognize that that was a challenge. Um, with regard to the funding measure, the funding mechanism that we eventually chose, which was the the payroll tax, we employ or payroll tax. Um, it looked, if you only looked at that one measure, it looked as if we were putting all of the burden only on one small sector of of the economy. But if you actually looked over the last three years, uh Metro has put forward what we've called the Regional Investment Strategy, which included uh uh a housing bond, uh of Parks and Nature Bond, and then also the surround the wraparound services for homelessness. And if you look at what the funding sources were for those, some of it was from uh property taxes. Some of it was an income tax, some of it was other things. So if you looked at all four measures together and where the funding would come from, I think you would find that the burden was put pretty much in a very good balance across the board of all the people and businesses and everyone who live and work in the Portland Metro area. So I would encourage, as you consider where those funding sources should come from, look at the entire scope of all of the regional measures that Metro has done and wants to do, including the transportation measure, and how that burden is distributed across society.
Well, thank you very much uh for your answer and for your efforts. Uh, and please take back to your colleagues, at least my personal preference, that uh keep pushing. Yeah, we we've got to get something done on transportation.
Yeah, I'm going off the board, but I don't think I don't intend to to step aside and not be involved.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, anything else? Right, as everyone said, Craig already, thank you for all your years of service. I sincerely appreciate your help uh as I became mayor and even when I was the counselor, you always reached out.
Yeah.
Uh, it was very informative. We had our disagreements, but we talked it out. Always got along. We had a lot more agreements than we did disagreements. So thank you for taking care of our region.
My pleasure. It's been a privilege.
All right, thank you. All right, so moving on to uh Council Media Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. Uh, we've got uh the moment of silence that uh Counselor Brooks requested, so I'm gonna ask her to uh lead that off when we get to the city council meeting, give you a little prep time to think about what to say. And then who would like to do the uh Small Business Saturday Proclamation? Okay, Council Pratt has her hands up, so she'll do that proclamation. Uh, is Sherilyn, do we have the chamber gonna be testifying for that?
Um, you know, I did not verify with Linda, but I would assume so. I can text her. Um, I would assume that she's gonna make a a statement.
All right, thank you. Um, and then does anybody, and as far as the agenda, any questions on the consent agenda tonight? Any concerns on a consent agenda? I see anything. Um, one request I have is I'd like to move the uh annexation public hearing up. So under hearings, when we get to hearings, I would do, I'd like to do the quasi-deducational public hearing for the annexation first and then we'll do the PTA, uh those folks who uh um are associated with the annexation then can leave the meeting if they'd like. Uh, and we can continue on with the PTA discussion. So uh just give me a heads up. I'm gonna flip those if that's okay with everybody. Jane had any nods, all right. All right, so we have about fifteen minutes for Council Communications and I'll start with uh my pictures here. So Counselor Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
All right, that's easy. Counselor Pratt.
Two things. Um, first is the um Tuolatin Community Police Foundation has got their um duck raffle going on and um we're trying to purchase replacements for four AEDs for the um police cars for Tuolatin Police because um they're often our first responders and so we want to make sure they have good equipment to do that. So you can go to tucpf.org and it's um ten dollars for one ticket. Um, or you can buy eleven tickets for a hundred dollars with and then um the first prize is a thousand dollars. And I think second prize is five hundred and third prize is a stuffed Tony dog. And um the second thing is that um Stand Up Tuolatin is partnering with um NAMI of Washington County and they're having a mental health impact series. The first session, um there's I believe there's four sessions. The first session is going to be um Wednesday, November eighteenth, and um you can find the link is really long, so um the easiest way to um find this would be to go to twelvetogether.org and you can get more information on this. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Council Reyes.
No, nothing to report this this last week, so thank you though.
All right, Council Morrison.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the only thing I have is just uh to bring everyone up to date on the C four meeting last week. Um, ODOT has extended their uh public uh input through and I there's multiple dates because they have an open house that continues through the uh November sixteenth, I believe. And then they have public comment that continues, has been extended, believe it's in early December. Um, they're working on their five-year uh stiff plan um beginning in a couple of years out, but they're doing something really um it was very confusing to a lot of us at the C four meeting, although ODOT did, I thought, a very good job of of trying to walk us through it. That they're doing, they're trying to set up priorities and then categories and then strategies. And then if you if you vote for a strategy, then that puts an emphasis on a category. So Clackamas County was trying to figure out how they get the most money out of the choices that they had. The number one concern for Clackamas County is Highway forty-three from uh Canby all the way up into Portland and to get funding for that because that was originally supposed to be funded. It was originally supposed to be funded out of a stiff grant from three years ago that the C four voted on to fund. And then they gave up those funds to Milwaukee for a project that fit, that qualified for stiff, but um didn't qualify for the T twenty twenty plan, but Highway forty-three qualified for the T twenty twenty plan. And it was sadly, it was a great um collaboration between all the cities and the entire Clackamas County on kind of sharing and caring. And then when T twenty failed, it was a huge setback uh for Westland in particular, which and Lake Oswego, which are most impacted by that. So it was supposed to be a twenty-minute conversation, ended up being almost ninety minutes, um which cut which cut everything else up, but it was fine because everything else, we got everything else uh covered. Um, I got my point across. We there's still some confusion over funding issues with respect to uh local transportation um and getting that funding for for Borland Road um for the Tuolatin Shadow, but um well, I don't know how much longer Garrett's with us, but um he's been on top of it and has already was already engaging with uh uh with Clackamas staff and clarifying for me my confusion over the different funding sources for the different projects and and why something was mentioned and something wasn't mentioned. So all in all, it was a very interesting meeting. Um, the there's some information on the Clackamas website and there's information at ODOT for anyone who's interested in um in commenting on it. And there are very few projects, Highway ninety-nine, we can't even, we're trying to get it on the map. We can't even get it on the map with ODOT, so. Um, and that's another effort that the city of Tuolatin staff has been working very diligently on. And I'm hoping Washington County, I missed the last meeting, Frank, so I'm hoping Washington County is pushing that as well to get at least get ninety-nine on the map. Um, so because it's kind of hard to be a part of a conversation when you you're not visible. Um, so that's all I had.
And ninety-nine W is one of those projects that was part of the T twenty twenty also. We got the initial million dollars from ODOT to do some planning, but um the there was additional funds part of T twenty twenty and that's not happening, like you mentioned, Paul. Uh, Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've had two uh local implementation planning meetings since we met last. The um last one was, we had taken a break um to go back to sort of um relooking at very Washington County focused um concerns and needs and um and then had two meetings. The last meeting was focused mostly on different pieces around uh reaching diverse communities. Diverse communities are disproportionately impacted and there is a lot of expertise at the table around highlighting who those communities are and how best to reach communities. The meeting before that, we focused a lot about how we reach.
The meeting before that, we focused a lot about how we reach people. Um, and to do consumer planning, uh, centered planning when we're looking at these dollars. Um, and how we're going to plan for them. So I, I enjoy working on the meeting. There's a lot of expertise and really good ideas. So a big thanks to all the people that are participating. Um, finally, or secondly, I wanted to say, um, thank you to everyone that voted in our election. We've had a record voter turnout and we taught, we all talked about the importance of voting, um, at our last meeting. And our communities, um, here really turned out. So, um, and we'll have, uh, and congratulations and thank you to everybody who ran, um, win or lose, uh, running for office is, um, not always easy and it is, um, everyone shares a desire to help serve the community. So I just appreciate everyone and, um, that put their hat in the ring. And then finally, um, on a personal note, when I proposed that we have a moment of silence for those suffering and impacted, by the COVID pandemic, I did not expect that one of my family members would pass away between that meeting and this meeting. Um, my family member had other health issues. Um, I think it's important to understand because we make so many decisions. And, um, I just want to acknowledge that there are many among us that are grieving and that are impacted in many different ways, maybe not personally, uh, maybe not just economically, maybe not just their business lives. Um, but there's so many with us. And from my personal experience, just to say, um, COVID makes going to the grocery store complicated. It makes losing somebody extremely complicated, extremely shocking, um, and difficult. So, um, I just, as, I think that in some ways, being trauma informed as a therapist is something that's really good, also as a public servant. And to know how many people are walking with grief and trauma at this time. Um, someone had said to me, we have to look on the bright side when I talked about something like this. And, um, I am one that's not for denial and not for attending to people, um, where they are, especially if people are suffering and in pain. So I just want to acknowledge everyone and, um, and say also thank you to the frontline, uh, workers, to, um, my relative was at Meridian Park Hospital right here in Twolton. And we have so many health workers, um, that are doing so much. And finally, the, uh, our governor just put a two-week restriction on our county. And I just encourage people to understand, read through that, understand how to help keep each other safe and how to care for themselves and each other in this time. Thanks. And thanks for your, uh, your, listening to me. There's a word I want and I can't find it. I'm a little off. Um, so I appreciate your understanding during this time. Thank you.
Councillor President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, councillor Brooks, I'm sorry for your loss. I didn't realize that you'd suffered a personal loss recently and I'm sorry for that. My sympathy goes out to you. It is very difficult right now. But, um, I think you brought up a really good point when you mentioned the governor's new, um, social pause, I think she calls it, um, that now includes Washington and Clackamas Counties. That's going to increase the hardship on a lot of our Twolton businesses even more. It's going to ratchet down restrictions and, you know, make doing business that much more difficult. It'll probably slow, um, customers into, uh, restaurants and stores to start with. And then on top of that, it's going to make, you know, occupancy a big issue. So I was wondering, um, if perhaps at the meeting on the 23rd, we could check in with Jonathan and find out how the, um, disbursement of funds is going. And if there's a way that we can do another small round or use some of our contingency money that we set aside to possibly bolster some of our businesses um, in the short term, because I'm, you know, I'm just very concerned about what this new, this new round of restrictions is going to mean and how long it could potentially stay in effect. I know the initial, um, proclamations were for just two weeks, but, um, with the daily diagnoses seen lately, it, it seems like two weeks might not be enough. And I'm just worried this added layer of, you know, setbacks is just going to be the death of some of our businesses who've hung in this long. So if anyone else would like to do that, I would love to see something on the 23rd and talk about our funding options again for our local businesses.
I'm happy to have Jonathan. I'm happy to have Jonathan come.
Yeah, thank you.
He will be having a discussion with you about urban renewal that night anyway. So he'll be in front of you so he can add to that presentation.
Okay.
Is that it, Nancy?
Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you for all.
Right. Thanks. Um, I'm going to hold off on my comments because, um, I'll probably just say something after the moment of silence, because right before this call, I was on a call with the governor. Where the county commissioners and mayors of the impacted counties, you know, namely Washington County, Oldham County and Clackamas County were on the call. I can review what the governor said and briefly, um, wrap up some of the impacts to our community. So, um, I'll say some, a couple of minutes here and I'll just say, uh, what the governor passed on after Bridget's comments because it's, uh, very appropriate. And yeah, Bridget, I'm also sorry to hear about your relative who passed away. So with that, we have two minutes. Uh, so take a break. Run the potty, real Valerie.
Sorry, real quick that, um, on the 12 together on those, um, the mental health impact series, go to 12 Together's Facebook page, not their website. The, it, there's a direct link on their Facebook page.
Great. Go ahead, take a break and we'll kick this back up at seven o'clock.